Welcome, everybody, to the Ryde Town Council Meeting of December thirteenth, twenty sixteen. Please rise and welcome.
Paul Melloto.
It's your honor. This way. Which one?
Well, this one right here. The flag is raised. To the flag, the United States of America. This is a republic, for which it stands. Our nation, our God, in his name, the Lord. This is the day of our death. Please remain standing. Heavenly Father, bless this assembly. Grant us the wisdom to make our every decision fair-minded and the best interest of all residents. Thank you. Madam President, call the roll, please.
Counselperson Lindsey Jackson. Yes, Counselperson Tom Marty.
Yes.
Counselperson Andrew Baxter. Counselperson Lynn Melonova.
Yes.
Supervisor Gary Sutterman.
Present. And Mr. Baxter had advised us last week that we would not be able to attend this meeting. It's not a regular meeting day. We changed this meeting day so that we may comply with the law and have a public, finish our public hearing on this purpose of the pledge. That meeting will be the first side of the business. Is the continuation of the public hearing. Do you have any comments from our accountants you want to touch base with? Are there changes that we made since the last time this matter was on? Well, if you'd like to. Otherwise, you know, what I was just going to do is summarize that the projected tax, real estate tax levy for twenty seventeen is the same as the levy for twenty sixteen. There is no tax increase proposed to natural now. And in fact, the tax rate went down very, very slightly because the assessment value of the town has gone up. That's almost not favorable. And we are projecting for end of year twenty sixteen, a surplus of more than five hundred and fifty thousand. The surplus for twenty fifteen was over three hundred and forty thousand. So that's more than two hundred thousand dollars more than last year's surplus. Which puts the town of Ryde in a very good financial position. We have money in the bank and we are able to perform our governmental functions as we should. Any comments from the council?
Yes. So first, I want to thank, obviously, our professional staff. Also want to thank Davy, Kathy and Dave, and especially Debbie for hearing all of my concerns. We spent some good time, a fair amount of time on the phone and went through probably about two or three different versions of my questions. And I feel very comfortable that this is a responsible budget. We've also identified some ways that the accounting can be enhanced to better identify some expenses and revenues for the town of Ryde. And so when starting out in the town of Ryde, just about eleven years ago, every year, the process has gotten better. And every year, the budgets have gotten tighter for the positive length. They've gotten tighter, more clean. And this is a perfect representation of that. Great job, Mrs. Supervisor, professional staff.
Thank you, Bill. Do I have any, some other council people?
Yeah, but thank our finance staff. They did a great job. I know it's my first budget and you guys were extremely helpful. So thank you for that and your patience with me in particular.
Only good questions, Red. Do you think so?
No, just like the financial staff also. They did a really good job.
My final comment is that I echo all of my fellow council people. Our staff did a terrific job. Daisy, as usual, performed extremely well and made us all understand what's really going on. And I want to compliment everyone counting to Davy, Kathy, Christina, who were fantastic with us. It was their first budget with the town of Ryde as well. Mike's was budget with the town of Ryde. Liz's first budget with the town of Ryde. Tony's first budget with the town of Ryde. Debbie's first budget with the town of Ryde. And I think we put together a really, really good budget. And I think, just as importantly, I think that the staff, and this goes especially for Debbie. And also, the staff, the entire staff in the town. Sorry, the department heads, Hope, Nick, the assessor, Denise, and everybody else managing the budget that we had and helping us to come up with, I know that there were some bumps in the road, but coming, helping to come up with a surplus. And a special thanks to Paul Melloto, our town attorney, who worked the legal end of it to help us produce some money that was a bit unexpected. And I think all in all, it was a very good year for the town. And I'm actually planning to do a state of town address in February. But this budget, I think, is a good budget going forward. And thank you all for helping out. This is a public hearing. So last, first comments for members of the public. Unfortunately, there are no members of the public present. So I'd like to have a motion and second to close the public hearing. So move. I'll second. Let's just call the roll, madam clerk.
Counselperson Jackson. Counselperson Jackson, yes. Counselperson Marty.
Yes.
Counselperson Melonova.
Yes.
Supervisor Sutterman.
Yes. Now, we have a resolution adopting the twenty seventeen budget. And I have a motion and a second for that. So move.
I'll second. Counselperson Jackson, yes.
Counselperson, we have a discussion. Any discussion? Sing, let's just call the roll.
Counselperson Jackson, yes. Counselperson Marty.
Yes.
Counselperson Melonova.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sutterman.
Yes. We have approval of minutes from the special meeting held under the force and the regular meeting held under the number fifteen. I hope you go over them. And so I have a motion and a second with two sentences. So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Madam clerk. Comments from the public? As I said before, we don't have any members of the public present. And therefore, we pass on to next section of the agenda. We have two resolutions. The first one is a Hazmat inspection contract award on Hazmat Crawford Mansion. This is in conjunction with the one that we're planning to do at Crawford's Park. This is awarding services for the Hazmat inspection. Before any work must then commence, we need to inspect the premises for asbestos and lead tincture. And this awards the contract to the low bidder, who is a responsible contractor. It was vetted by our house protect, Gary Gianfrancesco. And all of the public documentation is in the package as well as on the list. So I'd like to have a motion and a second for that. So move. I'll second. Please call the roll.
Counselperson Jackson, yes. Counselperson Marty.
Yes.
Counselperson Melonova.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sutterman.
Yes. The next section of, the next resolution, I'd say next section of the meeting is bittersweet for me. You may or may not have read in the press, speaking to those watching on television or on internet, our long-term, long-time and long-term town attorney, Mr. Melonova, is leaving us. He'll be taking a position with our new district attorney. I think it's First Deputy District Attorney. Well, the title is First Deputy. Yes, First Deputy District Attorney. And Paul will be leaving on or about January first. I'm sad to see him go. We've worked together this entire year and I appreciate his counsel. I appreciate his friendship. I appreciate his knowledge. And those will be missed, but I still have his cell phone number. And I know who to call if I get into trouble. Paul, it's been a pleasure working with you. It really has been. And I know that we'll continue on. You're free to join us every third Tuesday after the meeting.
On my calendar.
To help us celebrate the end of the meeting and whatever. So we have a resolution on to appoint a new town attorney. But I'd like, before we get to that, I'd like to, if anybody else would like to speak about Paul, please.
I would be happy to be so, Gary. Paul doesn't pick up his cell phone. I know where to find him on the beach or the tennis court, so we have it covered. But in all seriousness, I've known Paul for as long as I can remember. First, as the mayor of Mamannas, as the county's legislator, and now as town attorney. And one thing I should say about Paul is he's intelligent and well-buried on matters with local government. He's a great role model for anyone interested in public service. And really has carried the torch for local service throughout the town shore. It's been great to work with him in his past few. And he was more than a town attorney, I think, in the past year or so. He really helped guide me and I know Gary and Lily, you know, just starting out and got us through, you know, what we had to do and kept everything afloat. So thank you so much for that. Like I said, I'll find you on the beach, Gary.
It's been good working with you, you know, on the town and stuff. Our wife's a friend. And, you know, dog lover also. She's a little puppy.
Hell, but I get a chewy dot com box almost every other day. You must do well.
Yes, yes, we do. But it's been, it's been nice working with you. And you did a lot for the town, you know, and I appreciate that. And congratulations, I give you the best.
Thank you.
Well, Paul, all I could say, well, I could say a lot, but first, thank you for being a great friend to me, a great friend to my family. You've been, you've been everything that I've ever asked you to be for me. A confidant, a great personal advisor, a great political advisor. You have navigated a great path for me personally over the past two decades. You brought people together from all different spectrums, from all different places. All for the best for the community, whether it's Rochester, the town of Ryde, whatever it may be. You've always been very supportive of me and that's something I can never thank you enough for. And, you know, this is bittersweet. And I'm very happy that you're doing what you want to do. And, you know, I wish Sam was here to give you, to give you a little something, a little go-away present.
You would be so kind.
But Sam's comment was that no one ever quits and no one ever gets fired. So you proved him wrong.
Sorry, Larry.
So Paul, congratulations.
Can I say something?
Before I tell my first words, then?
I've known Paul for many years, from the time that he was mayor. And we just mentioned the other day that our working relationship goes back. I've always admired him. And also, there was never a separation with Cory Thomas. He just treated him very kindly, a great human being. So I thank you, Paul, and you're, for all you know, so you have shared with me. Pretty kind of stuff you're doing. I wish you much success in your venture.
Thank you. One other? I do, thank you, thank you, very good. Thank you for the very kind words. You know, it's, it's a lot of fun, actually, the town of Ryde. And you know, my relationship with the town goes back many, many years. Having been mayor of Mamannas and Wyneck in part of the town. So I go back to the old John Joffrey, the supervisor. But my individual relationships, you know, I don't live with her since she was probably five. I mean, I don't have a whole lot. Because you've got that long, you've gone twenty years. And I, you know, her parents are dear friends. And so watching Lily grow up and then become a town health officer is very, very impressive. Tommy was the, you know, first of all, he was bad. He tortured me when I was the county legislator. He never voted me because he's a diehard Democrat. But he liked me and we'd hang out together and he was just a very kind person. Now Gary, actually goes back to my county legislator. When I was last, you know, during the campaign, when people were talking about the airport and how Gary wasn't going to do anything. You know, when I was the county legislator, Gary was a pain in the neck. He was a trustee in my group. If somebody spit on the runway, I'd get a letter from Gary's government about the airport. So, you know, I know that he'd be a very vigilant supervisor about, you know, activities at the airport, which is now back in the press. You know, for many years, you'd never heard of it. And all of a sudden, it's on the front page. And I know that he was very concerned about it. But, you know, then when Gary became supervisor, I really got to know, you know, through the campaign and stuff, and had a lot of fun. I really enjoyed, Gary has a great team intellect. But as a client, you know, the town's a client, he listened, you know. I mean, look, I enjoyed my years with Joe Carvin, you know, he brought me in. And I think we did a lot, you know, coming after the, after the Gorbino administration, we had a rough time. And Billy knows, it was a lot to do. And Joe Shirley, you know, was a very bright guy and a lot of ideas. I can't say he always listened to me, but, you know, he knew what he wanted to do. And I know their years were extremely informative and very, a lot of fun, even we had Sam Torrendy as well, who I just dearly. So Billy was the key guy during, he was the historical, you know, connection. He was the guy that had the history. He knows everything about the town. And I didn't know as much, still don't, but he still does, who does what, where, how, and how to change things. So I really can't write for Billy because he taught me a lot. As Hope said, I've known Hope, you know, I had dark hair and I was six-two. So I was, I met her when I first became mayor of municipal officials. And Hope was probably just out of high school class. Right. So I've loved working with Hope on many levels. She's always been a joy. And Debbie, I have known actually as well in my past life. She was active with the police. And she was active when Joe did the student activities, putting students in with the new professor. So I've always admired Debbie. I know her husband well, who had played tennis against him because he's long to why they clubs. He's not as good as you think he is. But he was a great guy and I loved him. He did wonderful, he did wonderful stuff. And he's a fun person to be with. And I take great pride in, you know, helping to bring Denise in. When we had a vacancy, I think that was one of our best positions under the Carvin years. I think it is a great asset for the community. And I really enjoyed Nick. I mean, I didn't know Nick as well because Nick hired him as cubby hole. And I had to pull him out, you know, spring out, hey, what's going on, you know? And Nick and Hope, as tax receivers, you know, doing Ian Ramsey, work very closely with the tax receivers. You know, he's heard all the stories too. He just doesn't talk about them like I do. But they all call Nick and they tell him why they're not paying the taxes. You know, he's much more tolerant than I am. I mean, he's much more patient. But I think he's a great guy. I, he's a lot of fun to work with. Maybe other wise people appreciate that, I do. And Davy, I mean, Davy's been wonderful. I didn't know Davy. Sam, actually, was the one who introduced me to Davy. And when Joe took over and he said, no, you're going to love the guy, he's a great guy. He was a great control man. I just, I'm humble and hardworking, so it's great. And I think he made a great choice with Jeff. I feel he will watch your back, as I do. And I think he will do a great job. He went to hockey, so he's probably smarter than me. And the reason was because I went to a college to play hockey, so Davy doesn't fly.
Sports, I thought about that.
Yeah. But I do want to thank you for, first of all, just keeping me here. And it's been a lot of fun and it's been great to be part of the town of Ryde. I think people from Westchester tend not to know other communities. And this is a great town, it's brilliant. I think it doesn't get the press it deserves. I mean, Rochester is a dynamic community, a lot going on, a lot of potential. I think Ryde is a very great community. I mean, you can't second it on as far as schools and the people are great. I mean, you know, I can't say that Mamannas, of course, is a plan, but I should say, Lindsay is a Wyneck high grad. And I think it's a great town. It has everything you could want. It has culture, it has arts, it's got, it's got great sports, it's got great schools, and it's got a lot of community events. And I think that's something that we need to, you know, promote. I am not going far, as you know. I will be in white lights. Probably see Gary more physically than I do now because he's going to be right across the way from me. And part of my responsibility to be interacting with the town, which later is, you know, I have to control over the DA's budget. But I will be doing a lot of different things. I'm learning now how to be posterior, which is kind of, I would like to say I look forward to working with you in my new role, but generally that would not be good for you. I just imagine if you are in trouble, there will be some community outreach stuff on purpose. And I look forward to that. But as I said, you have my cell phone number. I know where to go the third Tuesday of every month. And I'm still in town. I'm not moving away, so you know where to find me. And, you know, I do want to keep in touch with each and every one of you. You know, really, the personal relationships are important. And that's why I always tell my kids, and I appreciate what Hope said about politics. You know, it's got relationships in life, not cars and deep, really. Ironically, I guess you could see that because the new district attorney happened to be Democrat and he brought me in. So.
You're a Republican?
I, oh, I, you know, I have a small R, I guess you'd say, you know, my background and history. But as Hope said, you know, party really is important thing. As we like to say, there's no Republican or Democratic way to pick up the gun. They provide, it's required, I think, the same for a fighter running a district attorney's office. So with that, I am very grateful again for all that you've done for me. I don't think words can express it. But I don't want to start crying because I can feel them on TV and, you know, there's no crying in politics. So thank you.
You're very welcome and thank you. We all appreciate it. That brings us to a resolution, the appointment of a new town attorney, effective January first. Are you going to still talk to them?
Yeah, I guess tomorrow we can, yeah.
Our new, the resolution names Jeff Binger, who's had a long relationship with the town of Ryde. I've known Jeff. Well, I guess I met Jeff when he and I sat together in, I think it's twenty thirteen, at the Westchester Town Attorney Division Commission. Yep. We had known each other before then, but we really got to know each other then. And I know that he's worked with Paul over the last number of years on matters involving the town of Ryde. And I think most everybody on this board is familiar with Jeff. So before us is a resolution, appointing Jeff as visiting town attorney, effective January first. May I have a motion and a second?
Who's the motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No. I can't say, obviously, this should be for the record, that Jeff has done a great job with the town of Ryde since he's been working with us. And I think from the, from the point of having continuity, I think this is an excellent opportunity for Jeff to step into this, to this role. And we should also make note that this, this position is going to be filling an unexpired term.
Correct.
And so that's going to be for one year, just for two thousand seventeen, and then we're going to revisit this again.
Yes, we are.
Very good. Very supportive. Thank you.
I would just like to say I really look forward to working with you. I'm excited to sort of go forward with the town. As much as we're going to miss Paul, I think it's great to have someone like you kind of fill us in. We're very excited.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard. Thank you, you're welcome. Paul Roll, madam clerk.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Counselperson Jackson, yes. Counselperson Marty.
Yes.
Counselperson Melonova.
Yes. Yes.
Do you like to say anything, Jeff?
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you very much, Gary, Billy, Tommy. You know, it's a very natural feeling for me to take on this role. I feel very comfortable already. Paul and I have worked together for quite some time. My, you know, I've been back sit workers, you know, and so I interact with Paul all the time on local matters, you know, affecting the town. I do want to, you know, recognize Paul and acknowledge that I have very big issues with him. And I too know where to find him because we are constantly on the kind of story. He has a much better background than I do and I respect that very much. But I know where to find him, counsel. I wish him much success in the years off of me. I happen to be a former assistant district attorney. I know he's in for, he's probably in for the second best job of his life, starting for this one. It is a very stimulating experience. And, you know, to be the kind of attorney that I modeled myself on, he always does the right thing, irrespective of politics and, you know, perspectives of people that, you know, don't really impact the merits of a man. And a DA, an assistant DA, always have to do the right thing and to do justice. Okay, he's going to do that and I know that. He calls a duty and he's done that for the town for all these years and he's done that in his career. And I'll try to model myself on his, on his role. I will tell you this to everybody. There are two main attributes I hope you'll find in me. Number one is trust, okay? There's the bedrock of any relationship between a attorney and client. You have to trust me, I trust you. I promise you that as a sort of an element of that trust, I'm going to give you as honest of me to the law and legal questions and issues as I can, I tune them along as I see them. I'm not going to sit and poke things. I'm not going to say things. I will tell you exactly how I feel, whether that result is a good one or a bad one from your perspective. You'll at least hopefully have confidence in me that I'll have given you an honest opinion of the context. The second thing is I know everyone probably, you know, is interested in its ineffectability. I'll be as successful as Paul. I'll be as successful as Paul, I'll be as successful as you want me to be, uh, twenty-four seven, really. And, uh, you all know how to reach me, you know, how to reach me. And, um, I wanna just thank you and Hope and Debbie and Denise over there. Um, look forward to visiting this role. Thank you so much and, uh, um, see you 2017.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, with that, this is our agenda. We have reports, possibly we don't have reports. Uh, do we have a report from Westchester today?
Actually, no reports this evening. I just wanna say good luck, Paul. Um, thank you for always making me feel welcome. Thank you for supporting the City Diary. Um, you've been more than professional. I totally enjoy working with you and I wish you the best of luck. And Jeff, congratulations, and I look forward to working with you more. And as we said the other day in court, this is actually fun, so I'm looking forward to more of that in many different capacities. So I don't have an official report of anything else in assessment related matters, um, just I wanna wish everybody a happy holiday and, um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Davy?
Uh, two quick, quick things. One, one is to continue the Paul photo show for tonight. Um, it's been, it's been my honor and privilege the last nine years to work with Paul. He's one of the leading, I'm still standing here after nine years because he's had some interesting dots. Um, but I thank you so much for, for all of his counsel, uh, over the years. He's really been a great voice to the, to the Town of Ryde, um, voice of reason. And as Jeff indicated, he has very big issues to fill, and I'm sure he's very capable of doing that, uh, if he lies, uh, falls standards. Uh, the other thing I thought that maybe under whether it's under finance or Paul, uh, the tax receivable summary report, uh, we're at three million four twenty-seven, which is about one point nine three percent of the, um, the levy for, for 2016, which is, we are ahead of schedule and it's done very well due to the tax receivers' collections and hard work and, and the town attorney's, um, hard work with the in-rans. And, uh, he will, unfortunately, will not be here for the class of 2017, but he may wanna just, uh, run past the, the current, uh, in-rans, uh, that he has and, you know, maybe he can pass it towards to Jeff.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Receiver, do you have a report? Written reporters, anything on today?
What?
Anything oral today? No, no, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I wanna say, you know, Paul's been the age, and I had forced him down the path. He never gave you the weight when you were, but good luck to you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, supervisor, thank you. Thank you. And, uh, uh, the town clerk, town clerk, you have reports, you have written reports of the visit, have you anything to add?
I'd just like to wish everyone a joyful, peaceful holiday and Merry Christmas to those who celebrate Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and, um, I wish you all a wonderful holiday. Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Uh, the superintendent of finances has submitted a written report, and now a last report will be, uh, returned.
I think I've said enough. And to, uh, nothing to report, the in-rans, the redemption date's the end of this month. We haven't really gotten a lot of money, uh, as you can see from Davy's report. Um, I did understand that, um, Dan Tartaglia will probably be picking up the in-rans, I figured after long talk with him today. Um, so we, I will be assisting him on, on, because he's actually picking up sort of like two-thirds of the way through. And, uh, at this point, it's just a matter, hopefully, they'll be collecting the money and then making a motion for some judgment, which he'll do in February. So, um, the changes will be smooth and, uh, I anticipate we'll be getting a lot of money over the next couple of years. People tend to wait until the last minute and then there's as plenty of activity.
Yeah.
The small class, so that's a good, it's a good sign.
Uh, they'll, they'll pay, they'll try to pay before the end of the year so they can take some tax deduction on their income.
Oh, we all pay, okay.
Well, if they don't, then we'll follow the procedure. Thank you, and, uh...
Gary, before we adjourn, I'd like to say a few words to, uh, Paul and Beth.
Of course. On tape, is this on tape?
Oh, thank you. Yes, completely on tape.
I have a show list of my kids.
I'm putting it on a record and saying, I've actually known Paul for longer than he remembers because as it needed to be activated in Ryde, we were all aware of Paul's notice. And I have to tell you that of all of the incredibly kind and welcoming people that I have met in this government, none has been more kind and more welcoming than you. And you have been absolutely accessible. Anytime I needed you, anytime I had a question, um, I knew that you were to work and that you would get back to me. And I owe you a personal thanks for this remarkable adventure that I'm on.
Great job.
And wish you the very best. And as a person who's just started that new adventure myself, I wish you all the best and more.
Convenance from the council, sorry, Lindsay?
Well, again, I'd like to thank everyone for this, um, budget process, all the guidance we received, Davy, our financial staff, Deb's work, couldn't do without Deb, um, and even your guidance, Gary, you know, we worked together and we came up with a great budget. We did get to a point where we had to determine whether we lowered the taxes by a high percentage, even though it's dollar amounts, it comes out as dollars and cents that are minuscule. But I think we made the responsible choice in not only preparing the budget for today, but preparing a budget for the future, making sure that our town stays financially sound, making sure we have everything we need for the future to build upon. And I'm really proud of the work that hopefully you've done. We've just kind of been along for the ride, but I think we made the right choice in what we did. And, um, it's gonna make this town stronger and better and more open and it's a great thing to, like, of, of things.
Thank you. So I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah, and good luck to Paul, and welcome aboard Jeff, and, um, that's about it. Okay, uh, again, solid budget, uh, the taxpayers should know that they are well-served by this budget and the hard work that went, uh, went into preparing it and, uh, and for the future. The, um, wishing the residents of the Town of Ryde a Happy Hanukkah and a Merry Christmas. Jeff, congratulations, look forward to the next, uh, year and the future with you.
Thank you.
Paul, just say thanks again, and congratulations to you. Um, and then just one quick update, uh, Stormwater, uh, the, the project is still very active, uh, very, uh, Jeff will pick up on this with, with us as well. Uh, Gary maybe wanna give a, a quick update on, on this Stormwater as well, but, uh, still going along the way it should be. I believe that we are out of the advisory committee and should be going towards the Board of Legislators, so, uh, we're looking for some positive, uh, response over the next couple of months.
Just to echo that, that is, that is correct. It's, um, I've been advised that it should be going to legal soon and then it goes to the Board of Legislators. Um, and I would give the council advice as to its progress. Um, hopefully we'll get positive news very soon and get it to the Board of Legislators, um, by the end of January. Um, on a personal note, I want to thank everybody in the town for all the help and support that you've been giving me as the new supervisor, starting with the department heads, I think I may mention this, but, uh, everybody has been terrific. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. Um, Denise is in the room, Nick is in the room, Hope is in the room, our, our major department heads, um, have been wonderful and I'm looking forward to a better year next year now that we've gotten our feet wet and somewhat know what we're doing. Um, Davy, our controller, uh, as I said before, superb, it's a pleasure working with you. We have plans coming up for, for this year, uh, I, I'm looking forward to coming to fruition. Most importantly, on Quafford Park, which is going to be a major, major, uh, improvement and renovation, benefiting everybody in the town. I'm hoping that that's gonna be completed by the end of 2017. Um, Jeff, welcome aboard. I'm looking forward to working with you on a closer level than we've had before. Paul, you have done the last one.
There's already a next year, we have a town partnership.
That's true, we have a fire commission, that should be...
Not done yet.
Nope, nope, nope. Says here, um, this is the, the last meeting of this year. Um, and Davy, a special, a lot of thanks to you, you have been, I think the all the choices that I've made since I became supervisor, be you on board, be you to very best. And thank you for, for being with me. Um, my fellow council members, you're all terrific. I've grown to know each of you much, much, uh, more, uh, I guess that's good, right? Uh, and, and much better than, than when we started out. I gain a new appreciation for each of you, and I've also learned each of your perks and privileges, so hopefully, hopefully next year will be better for all of us. It's been a new green year, I'm looking forward to even a better one next year, and to everybody viewing and to everybody in the room. Uh, to echo what all of us said, happy holiday season, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, and, um, I'm looking forward to the future. So thank you. With that, motion to adjourn. Salute.
Second.
All the favor?
Aye.
Good news again, thank you all.